Good evening and welcome. The December 10th, 2024 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Dr. James, will you please read the board commitment statement?
Yes, we are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. These procedures are applicable for each are on a separate sheet of paper. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Can you please call the roll?
Good evening. Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3. Mrs. Nancy Throhwa, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Sean Martin, Donellen High School.
Here.
Sanjay Karthik, Vanguard High School.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Dr. Gullett, please share information regarding who will lead our inspiration and pledge of allegiance this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, nice to see you as always. It is my pleasure to have Dr. Brewer come forward and she is going to introduce some very special students from North Marion High School, our Student Government Group that participated in Drive for Life program, which is so near and dear to our hearts. So, Dr. Brewer, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. As we strive to always highlight student accomplishments at our schools, I would like to introduce you to North Marion High School's Student Body President, Abigail Haig, and one of -- you can come up -- and one of the co-vice presidents of the senior class, Carson Switzer, too. Carson will also serve as a student board member during the third quarter of this school year. These two students will share information about a powerful student-led organization at North Marion High School called Drive for Life. The annual event takes place before spring break each year and/or prom season. They adjust it according to their calendars. Also in attendance tonight are quite a few students that I would like to recognize. We have Isaac Smith, Colton Hughes, Adrian Servantes, Matthew Perry, Walicia Howard, and their sponsor, their student leadership sponsor, Mr. James, and their proud principal, Mr. Johnson. So at this time, they're going to say a few words to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer.
And then leaders. Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent and esteemed community leaders. My name is Abigail Haig, Student Body President.
And I'm Carson Switzer, Senior Class Co-Vice President.
And we are here on behalf of our leadership students to prepare -- to share the importance of Drive for Life program.
Between 2008 and 2010, our North Marion community experienced unimaginable tragedy. We lost several young lives to traffic-related accidents, including the devastating jambalaya crash in January 2008, which claimed the lives of five students. These heartbreaking losses ignited a commitment to ensure that no family or community would suffer such grief again. From that pain, Drive for Life was born.
In partnership with the Marion County Children's Alliance, supported by Duke Energy Grants and generous local funders, Drive for Life works tirelessly to promote safe driving behaviors. Our mission focuses on the four Ds of driving, addressing the dangers of driving while drunk, drugged, distracted, or drowsy. We believe that education and awareness are critical to changing habits, saving lives, and keeping our roads safe.
Our leadership students are passionate about spreading this message to their peers because these are our friends, our siblings, and our future at stake. Drive for Life is more than a program. It's a movement to honor those we've lost by protecting those who are still here.
We are thankful for the support as we ensure that every young driver in Marion County understands the responsibility that comes with being behind the wheel.
Together, let's make sure the memories of those we lost fuel a safer, stronger, and more vigilant community. Thank you. Now, can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we sit in?
Okay. Board, at this time, there's been an ask that we move Item D 29.6 to be moved up in the agenda for the purpose of having our outside counsel discuss the listing agreement. I just needed to make sure that you all were in agreement with that before we move forward.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I actually was going to make a request, a motion, to postpone that to the first meeting in January because while I know that we gave Attorney John McGraw the purview to find a singular commercial broker for us, in light of the challenges we've experienced over the course of the past few months in facilities and so forth, I personally am not comfortable with voting on a singular contract when the known proposed broker is a close personal friend of a fellow board member. And that's just not a really good look for this board in a situation for which I'm not comfortable at this point to even vote on. So I would like to make a motion that Item 29.6 be postponed until January. But it has to have a second. I don't know.
I'll second that. I have other reasons it was put together. We were all away last week and just barely got back, and our school board attorney had shared that it would be a push. We put it as a placeholder, hoping for the best. But I was going to probably abstain tonight anyway. So I second.
Okay. So, David, if I'd like to comment?
Well, since it's open for discussion, certainly. I assume that we're talking about me.
Motion to postpone. A motion to postpone is not debatable or amendable. So you have to vote on the motion.
But we can have discussion, no?
No, not on a motion to postpone.
Well, then, let's vote.
Okay. So, the motion on the table is to postpone until January?
Until our first meeting in January.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Puts us at a tie.
Motion fails.
Motion fails at 2-2.
So may we enter into discussion about it now?
The motion has failed, so when it comes up for the actual motion?
But the chair asked for us to have discussion about it.
Right. The motion to postpone is not amendable nor debatable. And so that means that this will still be a motion which is going to come forward because it hasn't been postponed, and at that time, discussion will be available.
Okay. So I need to bring a motion forward?
No, it will be -- it's Item 29.6 on the agenda.
Okay.
It goes forward on the agenda, so.
My understanding was we were bringing it forward because Mr. McGraw was here to answer our questions ahead of the later part of our meeting.
That's correct. So if we are now moving into the portion, I believe there's still some things we need to take care of on the agenda. But if we're moving into that portion right now, then we have a motion, we would have a motion second and discussion on the actual motion, not on the motion to postpone. So if somebody, if item, as to Item 29.6, if somebody wants to state a motion that we accept the agenda item, then we can move forward from there.
Okay. So I make a motion that we look at Agenda 29.6?
So I'm sorry. If I, Chair, if I might pause. My understanding was the only reason we were even entering into discussion ahead of the agenda, because I had this discussion with Ms. Martinez earlier, and I said, it's not in the agenda. I'm confused. We wouldn't have even approved the agenda to make any kind of motion. We were having a discussion about this topic and then waiting for the business to occur later, so that, to respect Mr. McGraw's time. But there were insinuations made, so I can wait till comments if that would be a more appropriate time, but.
I can too. My understanding is what my understanding was that we were going to do this ahead of time to save taxpayer money so that we could address this issue and not have our attorney sitting on the clock for three hours' worth of a meeting.
Right.
Dr. Campbell.
And Chair, my understanding of the business portion of a board meeting is that the agenda is the superintendent's.
And I did ask the superintendent what she preferred.
Terrific. So at this juncture, we haven't entertained a motion or a recommendation from the superintendent on any of it. And so if this is the superintendent's purview for us to have conversation, to move an agenda item up ahead of several of the other things that we have on the list of things to do this evening, then that would have just been my request because traditionally and by protocol, the agenda is the superintendent's and not ours to be moving things around.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett and I spoke prior to this meeting, and so, Dr. Gullett, please share your comments.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no concerns with moving it up. I support that request.
Chair, would it be possible to just do the recognition for all of the people that are here and acknowledge them first? Would it be possible to get through that and not these lovely individuals who are here about FFO, and then we can move into this?
Absolutely. I'm in favor of that. Yes.
Thank you. I just need some clarity. I agree, we need to move forward. There was a motion and a second and a vote, and it did not pass. So my understanding would be it would go on the next board agenda, and we should all move on with our board meeting life.
The motion that went, the motion, excuse me, the motion was a motion to postpone. The motion to postpone did not pass. Therefore, it continues on to the regular agenda as, here, as it goes forward. So the motion to postpone did not pass. It's set on the agenda for this evening. So there was a motion to postpone it to another agenda. That motion failed.
Because Dr. Campbell made that motion, you seconded it, but it was tied 2-2. So it failed.
So the motion to postpone failed. The motion on the item has not yet been made.
So we move forward with our recognitions and yes.
And then when the recognitions are done, the board chair has the authority within the meeting to move this item up in the, up in the timing so that we can have it heard first.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
We will.
Dr. Gullett, that's good with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With that bit of discussion out of the way, we're going to move forward with our recognitions. Dr. Gullett, I believe we also have another recognition this evening.
We certainly do. I'm pleased to have, she's ready, Ms. Hutto come forward, and we are just so honored to have winners from Fine Arts for Ocala here with us tonight to be recognized. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gullett and board members and our esteemed guests. On October 26th to 27th of this year, Fine Arts for Ocala hosted the 57th Annual Ocala Arts Festival. As part of this festival, FFO hosts a juried student art competition annually, inviting local artists and retired art educators to be the judges of student artwork submissions from public, private, and charter schools in Marion County. Tonight, we are recognizing the MCPS students who are recipients of these awards. We know that this is a busy time of year, and so we have as many of our students as possible. Some of them do have conflicting events, of course, band concerts and things this evening as well. So as we call out our students and art educators, they will come forward to the front of the auditorium, and you should be able to see their artwork on your screens. At the elementary level, students receive an award of merit. Twelve of the 13 awards of merit that were awarded were won by our MCPS student artists. Tonight, we are recognizing from Anthony Elementary, Myla Johns, an art educator, Mr. David McGelvin; East Marion Elementary, Aubrey Clop, and Ms. Keo Weber Lee; from 8th Street Elementary, Lila Hale, and Ms. Jeannie Baines; and any of our students who are here, if you are coming down, are art educators. You guys can start coming down and walking this way. As you are coming down, please just come out and into the front of the stage, and then we will recognize you all together. Come on down. From Emerald Shores Elementary, we have Elias Martinez and Ms. Heather Porterfield; from Fort McCoy School, Elena Hicks and Ms. Allison Powers; from Harborview Elementary, Ashlyn Dorshide and Mr. Tyler Chigazola; from Maplewood Elementary, Jace Jelty and Ms. Jamie Rochay; from Shady Hill Elementary, Amelia Hutto and Ms. Carla Cavalier; from Ward Highlands Elementary, Autumn Spain and Ms. Ashley Condi; from Marion Oaks Elementary, Jerico Cami and Ms. Raquel Diaz Otero; from Madison Street Academy, Leah Novak and Ms. Michelle Wetz; and Ward Highlands Elementary, Delilah Roberts and Ms. Bailey Marhoun. These are our elementary winners. At the secondary level, awards are given for fifth through first place and a Best in Show Award winner. These are both from middle school and high school levels. For middle school, the fifth-place winner went to Donellen Middle School's Justin Marin Rios and art teacher, Ms. Shawna Mankovich. The first-place winner was from the Hillcrest School with Kamari Donar and art teacher, Ms. Zenita Hendry. And the Best in Show Award winner for middle school was from Bellevue Middle School, and that was Camilla Kobach Arbenois and art teacher, Ms. Kim Hera Karuth. Camille's performing with her band concert tonight. For high school, the fourth-place winner was from Westport High School, Sierra Norris and teacher, Ms. Lauren Roberts. Third-place winner from Westport High School was Nyera Mitchell, art teacher, Ms. Jessica Carter. Second-place winner from Donellen High School is Athena Tarnowski, art teacher, Ms. Rosa Green. First-place winner from Westport High School was Nicole Miller, art teacher, Mr. Greg Smith. And our Best in Show was from Forest High School, Leah McGinley and art teacher, Mr. John Yakulovich. Congratulations to all of our winners.
Ms. Hutto, thank you. I was able to attend the gathering at the Appleton where you highlighted a lot of this artwork, and the work that our students are doing is truly amazing, and I continue to be thankful for all of the opportunities that our students have available to them at Marion County Public Schools. So if you'll hold on for just a minute, we'd like to come down and take a picture to celebrate with you all.
Of course. Crazy sweaters.
Sure, of course. Of course.
Slide in behind. [inaudible]
You all on that side want to angle toward me? Everybody's looking right here. We can get everything. One, two, three, couple more.
[applause]
Thank you, sir.
Correct.
Thank you, Dr. James, for the recommendation to let us go ahead and get our recognitions on so we didn't hold up all of our students and families. Thank you for that. Okay. Attorney Powers, could you remind us where we were?
Okay.
At this point, we can move forward through recognition of donations considering approval of the agenda, or we can move forward to Item 29.6 at the board chair's discretion.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do donations, and then we'll come back to 29.6. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Okay. To recognize donations, we graciously acknowledge the following donations made to benefit our schools, students, and staff members. $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from the Pittman Law Office PA to be used to support the Bellevue Middle School Robotics Club. Thank you, Pittman Law Firm. $2,940 to Osceola Middle School from the Loot Guard Development Corporation to be used to purchase the Ed Puzzle Program to be used by teachers and students. Thank you, Loot Guard Development. $6,683.18 to Donellen Middle School from Kyle Bradley Painting LLC to be used to purchase a scoreboard for the Donellen Middle School gym. Thank you, Kyle Bradley Painting. We appreciate your support. $2,500 to the School Choice Department from MidFlorida Credit Union to be used to support the promotion and implementation of magnet opportunities. Thank you, MidFlorida Credit Union. Okay. Back to?
Madam Superintendent, if you could proceed with Item 5.1.
Certainly. Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 10th, 2024 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D 29.1, D 29.2, D 29.3, D 29.4, D 29.5, D 29.6, and D 29.7 that have been pulled and placed under discussion, and Item D 30.1 that has been placed under discussion, pulled agenda items.
And among those, 29.6 is the approval of listing agreement for the exclusive right of sale to the commercial property in the central warehouse. So we can begin with that one.
Okay.
After approval.
All right. I'm sorry, Attorney Powers, I couldn't hear you clearly.
Yes, you would request now a motion for approval of the superintendent's, a motion on superintendent's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second?
Not going to approve the agenda? Can the chair second an agenda?
No. Chair may not second.
The agenda has a lot of work in it.
All right. Without a second, the motion fails.
Failure will lead to closure of the meeting.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Failure will lead to closure of the meeting. There was a motion to postpone, the motion failed. That means that the agenda moving forward, the only thing that we can, there was only two items brought up. One was the motion to postpone, which failed. The second was that we would move this with consensus forward in the order so that the 29.6 could be heard. So if the board chooses now not to move in second, the approval of the agenda, then the agenda fails. That means the agenda items that are on for tonight will not proceed forward.
Chair, I would make a motion to approve the agenda recommendation of the superintendent with the exception of Item D 29.6. And I will make a motion for the rest of the meeting to continue.
Can I have a second?
I will second that.
All right. We have an amended motion approving the recommendation of the superintendent with all items except for D 29.6. We had a motion by Dr. Campbell. We had a second by Board Member Thrower. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-1.
I will note that 3-1 constitutes both a majority vote and a two-thirds vote, which will be required.
So, Mr. McGraw can leave. Right?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving forward. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 30th, 2024 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Campbell. Second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. May I have a mo, excuse me?
No, I just.
Okay.
Sorry.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 7th, 2024 Special School Board Meeting? May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Dr. James, second by Dr. Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 7th, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Dr. James, second by Dr. Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Ms. Martinez, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting.
The notice for the December 10th, 2024 school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on November 30th, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school board. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they may be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly.
to the operations of the school board. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order of receipt by the school board's clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they may be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a speaker. The additional speakers are on the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Elizabeth Wiley?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elizabeth Wiley, last name W-Y-L-E-Y. Now, when I speak, I just want to say sometimes I'm a little passionate. Obviously, I know it's not directed towards you guys. Just stating, that's how I speak. As a dedicated employee of Marion District Schools, I have always strived to embody the core characteristics that our district uphold: dedication, transparency, and individual responsibility. These values, combined with commitment to respect confronting reality and being accountable, are the foundation of our shared mission to put students first and leave a legacy of success. However, I find it disheartening that I have to call out of work just so I can simply have the opportunity to address the school board regarding pressing things that I find concerning. Previously, I wanted to speak to the school board, but due to my schedule coming out of Zone 3 over in Liberty Middle School, I would not have arrived till 6:30 or at least 6:45. I was informed that I would not be allowed to address the board, which left me puzzled. As a district that encourages openness and accountability, I feel bamboozled into thinking there would be hoops, or there wouldn't be hoops to jump through just to speak to you guys. I urge the board to examine this barrier, because employees should not feel restricted from sharing their perspectives simply due to scheduling conflicts arising from our professional duties. Beyond this issue, I would like to bring your attention what I feel I have endured this school year, which has been simply marked by disappointment and limitations. Before this school year even began, I bid on a route with the understanding that it was corrected and finalized for the second time, only to later find out that it wasn't even the right route. To my dismay, I was told there was nothing that could be done to resolve this error, leaving me dumbfounded and brokenhearted as I did not get the route that I bid on. Once the school year began, overcrowding on my bus became an immediate and pressing issue, and despite repeatedly seeking assistance, my concerns were not taken seriously, until I finally sent an email detailing the exact number of students registered to my route, and then reminded them of the school bus manufacturer's capacity limit. And only then was the situation addressed, leading to a stop drop that resolved the overcrowding. However, with the fewer students, this current bus remains inadequate. Our students are simply too big for three to a seat, creating a highly unsafe and extremely uncomfortable conditions. Compounding these challenges, my assigned bus route, 2020 is the number, began experiencing transmission issues. I was instructed by the department head of maintenance in Zone 1, told me to drive it until it broke. And it nearly did over railroad tracks, and I'm not talking about broken down railroad tracks, these are active railroad tracks, causing me to have a panic attack. The thought of returning over these same railroad tracks with 20 students on my bus, again, had me incredibly nervous. Following this, I was reassigned to a bus that, in my opinion, was not equipped for student transport. These seats cannot securely attach to the bus frame, there were no seatbelts on the bus, the emergency issue on the passenger side needed extreme force just to open it up. Additionally, there's no working radio, and I almost passed out twice while addressing students to extreme heat. And this isn't minor heat discomfort, the temperatures on that bus reached up to 113 degrees, creating a highly dangerous situation for both myself and my students. My role as a driver is to ensure safety, yet I was operating under conditions that made safety impossible. I'm speaking of bus number 0001. It is designed for a maximum capacity of 65 passengers, but at the time, I was transporting 80 elementary students and 74 middle school students registered to my route. Despite repeated calls of action, nothing was done to address the safe conditions that I have repeatedly reported. I bring these matters to your attention not out of just frustration alone, but out of deep concern for the safety issues of our students and the well-being of our drivers. It is essential to hold those responsible, accountable for those systematic failures, and to implement meaningful solutions to prevent further issues. I thank you for allowing public comment and for taking the time to hear my concerns. I trust that as I attend more school board meetings with real issues, our matters will receive the attention they urgently acquire. Again, I thank you.
Thank you.
So, am I supposed to stand here, be saying anything, just walk away? Cool.
Dr. Gullett, do you have anybody from transportation you'd like to visit with?
Yes, and Board, I want to say something. I don't typically comment on the public speakers, but it is my expectation that no employee is ever told that they cannot come speak to the board. That is not, that is not something that I would support, and I just need to comment on that. But yes, Ms. Dobbins is out in the audience, and she oversees transportation, could speak with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Okay, we are going to move into a public hearing. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policies, with the exception of Policy 9200, which has been placed on a separate hearing? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Dr. Campbell. Second?
Second.
A second by Board Member Thrower. Superintendent, you have some information to share with us?
I do. The adoption of revised board policies will ensure that the school board's policies reflect the board's guidance and that they are statutorily compliant. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gullett. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revised board policy? We do, correct?
That would be on the next, on the...
Okay, on the second one. Thank you for the reminder, Ms. Martinez. All right, seeing and hearing no public comment, Board, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy 9200, volunteers and school chaplains? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Campbell. Second?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. Likewise, Board, the adoption of revised board policies will ensure that the school board's policies reflect the board's guidance and that they are statutorily compliant. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board policy 9200?
Yes, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Deborah Daniels.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Deborah Daniels, D-A-N-I-E-L-S. I'm a retired Florida Secondary English and Language Arts teacher. I have two granddaughters who attend Marion County Schools, and I am a SAC member at Denellen High School. I'm here to oppose chaplains in our schools. It can be dangerous to allow chaplains, who are typically not trained or certified, to provide educational or mental health services to our students. They should not be assuming the responsibility of qualified professional school counselors, social workers, psychologists, and our other school staff. Students may be harmed by receiving inadequate mental health support, and we could be open to District 2 lawsuits. In addition, allowing chaplains in public schools would violate students' and families' religious freedom rights by inevitably leading to religious coercion and evangelizing of students. Chaplains are trained to provide religious counseling to people in spiritual need and are unqualified to provide student mental health services. They do not have the training or the experience to ensure that they adhere to our school's educational mandates and avoid veering and proselytizing and other promotion of religion, which is unconstitutional by school employees and our volunteers. The DOE model and your amended policy is going to be putting burden of responsibility on our principals and administrative staff at all of our schools. They would take on that burden of vetting, investigating, and then approving each applicant, then posting names to their school websites with whatever faith those chaplains are identifying with, communicating with parents and families, and all the collection of all the forms and ops-ins and ops-out, and then scheduling, monitoring, and supervising those volunteers. And ultimately, the principal's name will be the first name on that lawsuit if a child or student is harmed, along with the school board, the superintendent, and the school district. Public schools must serve all students equally. The American Civil Liberties Union, the National Education Association, civil rights organizations, and chaplains nationwide are against these unconstitutional efforts to impose religion on public school students. Please ensure that our public schools remain safe and welcoming for everyone, and do not burden our principals with more responsibilities, and reject the use of untrained, unqualified, uncertified chaplains in our Marion County schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
David Williamson?
Sorry to make you wait, that's a long walk. David Williamson, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S-O-N. I'm here on behalf of the Central Florida Freethought Community. I'm also Board Secretary for the Interfaith Council of Central Florida, and I'm on the Central Florida Commission for Religious Freedom. If you're part of the majority religion, or you believe that religion by default is always a good thing, a chaplain policy seems like a brilliant idea. But the devil is literally in the details. Government has long avoided entering the business of religion in the US since we invented the separation of church and state 250 years ago. When we started this grand experiment, every colony had its own religion, or I should say, Christian denomination. It didn't take long for us to figure out that that wasn't going to work. So now, no states have a religion. In fact, nearly all have their own form of the Establishment Clause. Florida is one of them, because we now know very well the problems that can occur when the government picks winners and losers when it comes to religion. Most European countries have either decided to financially support all religions or have realized the right path is for church and state to remain completely separate. Around the world, where one of those two systems is not in place, there's serious religious strife and second-class citizenship for the dissenters. The trend towards freedom and true religious freedom is that which increases the separation, not decreases it. Some in the religious minority, or majority, rather, may not see the concerns that exist from the vantage point of those who are not. But fortunately, many who are in the majority, including a majority of Americans and presumably the majority in Marion County, they agree that government should stay out of the church and the church should stay out of the government. And I understand that you might not see that's what's happening in this case, but that's exactly what's happening. And here's how we know. The idea of having good and decent members of clergy roaming the campus and providing social services to all students equally is a dream. A dream that can never be realized, because that's not what you have any longer. You no longer have a chaplain policy. What you now have is a nightmare. When you remove the potential for religious discrimination against non-Christian chaplains that could occur as you vet chaplain candidates, whether by staff or by outsourcing that discrimination to a local online chaplain certification body, when that discrimination is gone, you no longer have a chaplain policy. You have an open door policy, a policy that allows private conversations that anyone can have with your students, good or evil, moral or immoral. These conversations need not have any basis in religion, or in good decision-making, or even in support of a student's well-being, because your attorneys and the attorneys in the many school boards across the state who have already rejected such a policy proposal all concur that to select just the chaplains they want talking to their kids is unconstitutional. This includes Charlotte County, Hernando County, Duval County, Putnam County, and Hardy County school boards so far. In this policy and on your deliberations to date, we can now clearly see the problem you, your staff, your board, and district attorneys have been wrestling with for months. You can either have an unconstitutional chaplain policy that discriminates based on religious viewpoint, or you can have a constitutional policy that exposes you to serious legal liability. And not just from constitutional violations, but from the risk involved when you bring untrained, non-professionals onto campus to deal with some pretty heavy stuff in the lives of students. These kids won't just be going to see a chaplain because they got a failing grade or missed the cut on the football team. In fact, the Osceola County School District proposal, which is being voted on tonight, actually includes a waiver of liability. Can you imagine? To try to keep the school district from being sued when a chaplain does something they shouldn't be doing, maybe you should consider that. Any policy that requires parents to sign away their rights seems a little risky to me. It's my strong suggestion, as a member of clergy, as someone who works in the interfaith community in Central Florida, and who is involved in religious freedom conversations throughout, that you vote no on this policy. Even though it may not be popular with a vocal minority in your community, do what's best for your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Ellen Veely?
Good evening, Dr. Gullett, members of the board. My name is Ellen Veely, V as in Victor, E-L-I-E. I am a former educator, a college professor, a college vice president, and I maintain a strong interest in education here in Ocala, in Marion County. I would like to just make a couple of points that my predecessors may not have made, as just another way of thinking about the chaplain issue. What a board does is have a problem and then use policies to correct it. And so, the question is with the chaplain policy, what is the problem? There are some parents who might believe that they are being viewed by the school system as Christian parents of children and not doing a good job at it. And they also have support of their churches, who are also included with various programs fulfilling the mission that they are seeing for their religion. A second point I want to make, another way of looking at this issue, is does passing such a ruling really defy the First Amendment, which protects the freedom of religion for all families? A Catholic family may feel a non-Catholic chaplain is not representing their religious beliefs, and may want a priest, a Jewish family, a rabbi, et cetera. Does the board want to approve bringing into the classroom one religion above all others as superior while ignoring the freedom of religion asserted in the First Amendment? This would not be a good modeling for our children. One other point, who is the target audience here? Who in Marion County are we talking about? According to the website, Marion County Religion Full Report, 35% of people in Marion County are religious, that is religiously affiliated, and the site goes into details of all of the religions. That means that 65% of the families and... That means that 65% of the families and students are not religious, and are not Christian. Fewer are Christian, because the 35% includes some non-Christians as well. So again, going back to the original question, what is the problem that this chaplain situation is trying to, policy is trying to fix? Is it an attempt to fix the low level of religiosity in Marion County? So, there is one takeaway here. Please consider, what is the problem that this mandate will fix? Are there serious mental health issues of Marion County children that are more appropriately addressed by professional mental health experts? Or is there political pressure to mimic decisions made in some other states? Or is this board decision literally for the intended purposes of education, while being supportive of the Constitution of the United States and children in Marion County? Lastly, I want to thank you-
Time has expired. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joseph Richardson, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N. As a concerned citizen, I am strongly opposed to the introduction of chaplains in public schools. This program will jeopardize the religious freedom rights of our children, who have a right to an educational environment free from religious pressure. No child should feel compelled to pray, or seek religious guidance, or participate in worship services while at school. And with such a program in place, you won't be able to avoid the inevitable promotion of religion on campus by well-meaning school employees. The moment a teacher, counselor, or any employee even recommends that someone go to speak with a chaplain, they've crossed the line into coercion, which is prohibited. We must ensure our schools are places of learning, not venues for religious influence and indoctrination. It is not the job of public schools to help kids with their spiritual well-being. Students need certified and trained counselors, not uncertified and untrained chaplains, for their mental health and emotional support. Chaplains are simply not equipped to handle issues like anxiety, depression, or suicidal thoughts. School counselors and psychologists, on the other hand, are licensed professionals, trained to address these concerns and improve student success through programs that have demonstrated success. Introducing religious clergy, who may not even be trained in providing spiritual care, much less psychological care, is dangerous and could lead to the inappropriate application of religious doctrine into mental health matters. Additionally, chaplains cannot possibly offer unbiased services to all students, including those of different religions, LGBTQIA+ individuals, and the growing number of nonreligious students. Instead of compromising student care with inadequately trained clergy, we should focus on hiring and training qualified counselors to meet the emotional and mental health needs of all students effectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. All right, board, I open it up for discussion. I know that we spent quite a bit of time talking about this topic on our work session. Would anybody like to start us out?
I can.
Okay.
I-
Was a motion made on this?
Yes.
Okay, and it was seconded?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I was the board member who brought it up. Dr. Campbell, I think, and I both kind of had the idea to bring this forward, probably like six months or more now. And I believe that, well, one, I appreciate the testimony tonight, and can appreciate the hesitancy. But I also put my faith in God that the right people are going to come on our campuses, and the right work is going to happen. And I also believe that the procedures that are going to be put in place are going to be appropriate and fitting for what needs to occur on our campuses. So, I don't think that people are going to be roaming our campuses, as was said by one speaker tonight. I think that student safety is always a top priority, and that will be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. And yes, thank you to those speakers that came forward this evening, and many of you also emailed us and gave us the opportunity to have some dialogue back and forth. I've had quite a bit of email dialogue with individuals in the community about this as well. My interpretation is very similar to Dr. James in that I believe there's some misconception about what, at least I believe, the practice will be, as opposed to, it's the board's responsibility to put forth the policy, and then it'll be up to the superintendent and her team to implement the procedures as they see fit. I see similar policy with the parent bill of rights, where parents have the ability and the freedoms to choose what their students can and cannot have as far as books and things like that in the classroom and in schools. That's just one example. And I would see this operating very similarly, that anyone who steps forward as a volunteer, again, these are volunteers coming onto our campuses, that might have a religion or not from a chaplaincy perspective, they would essentially go on a list that a parent then chooses. And that may be of the predominant religion that was discussed here today, or it may not be. And so that would be up to volunteers in our community, rabbis, and imams, and other religions and faiths to come forward and choose to be volunteers in our schools. And then it would be up to the parents to say, "It is okay for this person to have a nonsecular conversation with my child, and I'm okay with that." And that's how I see this in practice. Currently, there is not a way for that to really occur in a really transparent way. And so this would just provide that opportunity for additional support for students, because ultimately, this is about students. And our students do have challenges. And some of those challenges, they would like to speak with someone in a nonsecular way, in the location that they spend the predominance of their day. And so that is why I will be voting in favor of this policy, because again, it is up to the board to put in the policy, and then the operation staff to put forth the procedures to make it happen.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thrower?
This new voluntary state law, no matter how well-intended, isn't ready for primetime at many levels. And therefore, it is my position that any related policies and procedures related to this new voluntary law are not ready for primetime either. I'll be voting no on this, keeping in mind that at the school board level, personal passions must be tempered by keeping our fiduciary responsibility as school board members towards our jobs at the forefront. I also am very mindful, in our district, of the attrition that we have experienced with assistant principals. Well, they tend to become principals if they hang around. And having been in this district since 1997, I've gotten to know quite a lot of people at quite a lot of schools. And I have, and this is interesting, because it doesn't happen very often, at least in my experience, I have not found a school leadership team yet that supports moving forward with this at this time. So that's where I am with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. I'll weigh in now. This has been one of the few issues that have come forward, that over the duration of time having the conversation, that my mind has changed. Because I believe that the intent with which it was brought forward is going to create more challenges for our staff and our families than what it's going to accomplish. And I just, I want to elaborate on this a little bit, really just going to be honest, because it hurts my heart. I love the idea of having chaplains on campus, and students that have permission from their parents to visit and talk with someone that's faith-based. And so, you know, we have those opportunities for our athletes, they have their coaches that they can go to, and we have guidance counselors that some of our students have access to. But one of our speakers mentioned, "What is the problem?" The problem is, we don't have enough mental health specialists. There's not enough people to serve our students. And so, in having that conversation, and bringing that conversation forward, we're looking for answers in how to support our students. That being said, as I imagined and visualized this program moving forward, I visualized my pastor, I visualized Reverend Cummings, trusted and well-trained individuals that would be having conversations with students. I also took this time to reflect on how I would feel as a parent, because both my students did go through Marion County public schools, but they have since graduated. As a parent, I would have a level of expectation that those that were providing guidance on our campuses would have a certain level of expertise. And so, similar to what Board Member Thrower said, I've had many, many, many conversations with administrative staff, and they feel this is going to be an added burden to their plate, to try to identify who's qualified and who's not qualified, because the state, in their excellent wisdom, didn't provide anything for us. And so, with that, I will be voting no on this policy. I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and maybe it will come back with some direction from the state. Thank you. Any other comments? No. Board Member Thrower?
I would be remiss if I'm not thanking the speakers that came forward tonight. I was actually rather hoping that there would be a mix of opinions and inputs before I made my final decision as I sat up here. But again, thank you for taking time out of your night to come and share your thoughts with us on this chaplaincy policy. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for taking time to speak with us this evening. Okay, with that, board, I believe we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails with a vote of two to two. All right. The next portion of our agenda is a lot of information, board. If you will bear with me, we have 12 items of information to get through this evening. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, to perform construction work on the following projects. To allow the district to purchase materials through the owner-direct purchase process to save sales tax, the construction manager needs to return the funds to the owner via a deductive change order. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Port Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders will be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Our first item, Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Equipment, Early Procurement Related to Construction of New Elementary School W, Change Order Number Three, Amendment Number One, Project 24-101. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $7,590.18 in sales tax. 10.2, Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Equipment, Early Procurement Related to Construction of New Elementary School W, Change Order Number Four, Amendment Number One, Project 24-101. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $57,124.49 in sales tax. 10.3, Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Equipment, Early Procurement Related to Construction of New Elementary W, Change Order Number Five, Amendment Number One, Project 24-101. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $38,583.63 in sales tax. 10.4, Amendment Number One, the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Equipment, Early Procurement Related to Construction of New Elementary School W, Change Order Number Six, Amendment Number One, Project 24-101. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $44,871 in sales tax. 10.5, Amendment Number Three to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Labor and Materials Consisting of Interior Construction Related to Construction of New Elementary School X, Change Order Seven, Amendment Number Three, Project 24-102. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $36,016.40 in sales tax. Item 10.6, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Osceola Middle School, New Gymnasium, Change Order Number Four, Amendment Number One, Project 24-109. This purchase will allow the district to save approximately $18,267.77 in sales tax. If my figures are correct, that is a little over $200,000 in sales tax savings. For the next six items are guaranteed maximum price with no savings in sales tax. 10.7, Compensation, Amendment Number Two to the Construction Manager Contract, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Construction of a New Central Warehouse, Change Order Number Four, Amendment Number Two, Project 20-102. 10.8, Construction Covered Dining at North Marion High School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number One, Project 23-118. 10.9, Construction of a Heating-Ventilation-Air Conditioning System for the Gymnasium at Howard Middle School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Eight, Project 23-113. 10.10, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Cafeteria Ceiling and Lighting Replacement at Bellevue Sant- 10.10, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Cafeteria Ceiling and Lighting Replacement at Bellevue-Santos Elementary School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Nine, Project 24-114. The Facilities Procurement Review Committee has developed the Construction Management Services Request for Qualifications Selection Process Procedures. These procedures will allow the Facilities Department to proceed with the selection process of construction managers as outlined in these procedures. The Construction Management Services requests the qualifications selection process procedures and can be located on the Facilities Department webpage. D10.11, Construction Management Services Request for Qualification Selection Process. The HVAC upgrades at Oakcrest Elementary School required the installation of a new transformer to provide power to the new mechanical equipment yard. Therefore, a perpetual non-exclusive easement between the School Board of Marion County, Florida, and the City of Ocala is needed. This easement allows the power company to install the new transformer to serve in the new mechanical building and cooling towers. It guarantees the required access for the power company to the easement area for installation, repair, and maintenance purposes. 10.12, Perpetual Non-Exclusive Easement Associated with Heating-Ventilation-Air Conditioning Upgrades at Oakcrest Elementary School, Project 23-108. Board, this concludes the informational items for today's meeting. We're now going to move on to Consent Agenda Items. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items, C12.1 through C26.3, with the exception of Items D29.1, D29.2, D29.3, D29.4, D29.5, D29.6, and D29.7, that have been placed under discussion, regular agenda items, and Item D30.1 that has been placed under discussion for pulled agenda items. May I have, may I have a motion?
And as a note, 29.6 has already been resolved by their earlier functions.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion?
On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, with the exception of the items that you listed for discussion.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items without D29.6 by Dr. Campbell. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Thrower. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes four zero. Okay, moving into Student Disciplinary Matters, Alternative Placements for Marion Technical Institute. Before addressing Expulsion Matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received the alternate placement list for students through November 8, 2024. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matters?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Hembrook and Attorney Blackman to give the Board additional information regarding expulsions. Good evening, Dr. Hembrook and Attorney Blackman. They're making their way down to the podium.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Conrad, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett. So this evening, you will be voting on Student Discipline Matters for Students Recommended for Expulsion with Services, and then later this evening, you will also vote on recommendations for Students Without Services. I wanted to take a moment to share information as we move forward with Student Discipline Matters. As we shared at the beginning of the school year, a safe learning environment for all students is a primary focus. And to reach academic outcomes for all students, schools must be a place that is safe and conducive to learning. So procedures regarding expulsions with and without services were developed, which included a decision-making matrix. And then briefings with Board members have occurred in which the procedures for expulsions were shared. Based on recent Board decisions at the Special School Board meetings for discipline, we are adjusting our procedures to align with these decisions. We hope to continue incorporating the Board members' requests in the future work session regarding expulsions with or without services. This topic is currently scheduled for January the 9th work session, and at this scheduled January 9th work session, you will have the opportunity to discuss more in detail with each other, the student discipline, including expulsions with or without services.
Thank you, Dr. Hembrook. Attorney Blackman, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'll just hear if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the expulsions of student JD25-081E, JD25-082E, JD25-083, with services for the remainder of the 2024 and 2025 school year and the first quarter and second quarters of the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Campbell, second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Thrower. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Local 1010, and the School Board of Marion County from 2022 until 2025? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James, second?
That was, that was.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Motion by Board Member Thrower, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Good evening, again, Madam Chair. Just briefly, Board, this item, this agreement was ratified by IU PAT, as we know most IU PAT, on December 2nd. Cost is roughly $1.3 million, and I just wish to thank all members of our collaborative bargaining team to come together and have this presented to you, Board. Ms. Morant, who's representing Human Resources and part of the, of the team, is available if you have any specific questions, but just to thank you to the whole team.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board, is there any discussion? Oh, yes, go ahead, Board Member Thrower.
Thank you, I'll just echo my, my thank you. It's, it's good to have this done and have the opportunity to vote on it tonight. Thank you for the really good work.
Yes. Dr. Campbell, do you have anything? Nothing else?
Agreed.
Yes, I just want to thank you too. It was quite a challenge, a lot of work from our teams, Ms. Morant and Mr. Carson, just really persevered through getting this accomplished, so we're thankful for their work in this area. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes four zero. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Florida? Florida, Blue Cross of Florida, Florida Blue. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, it's the fifth agreement that we're bringing forward to you. The cost of this is roughly one, well, it's not roughly, it is $5.6 million, Board. And we do have a presentation tonight. This is a big piece for us and to support our employees, so Ms. Taylor is here and has, I think, another guest with her as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good evening, Board Chair Conrad, Vice Chair, Board Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and our student Board Members, and let's forget in Board Clerk, Elena. So this item before you, D29.2, the Fifth Amendment to the Administrative Services Agreement of Blue Cross Blue Shield, as Dr. Gullett said, is a very big-ticket item, but is the cost providing exceptional benefits to our employees to ensure that they are ready for teaching and learning. And I have with me today, Mr. Laura Lingel from Gallagher Benefits Services, who's going to highlight the value of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Administrative Services Agreement with the district. Ms. Lingel has 21 experience, years of experience in the employee benefits industry. She possesses extensive knowledge in both the district and local area market, making her a valuable asset to Marion Public County Schools. Ms. Lingel has raised her kids in our school district, so she knows many of the employees personally, and she's always able to assist with any issues that we have. I'd like to present to you, Ms. Laura Lingel, to give you an overview of the Blue Cross, Blue Cross, Blue Cross Blue Shield Administrative Services Agreement. Ms. Lingel.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Dr. Gullett, Board Chair, Board Members, we're here tonight to discuss the Administrative Services Agreement between the district and Florida Blue. It is comprised of two components, the TPA, or Third Party Administrator Services, and then the Stop Loss, which is through Florida Blue's sister party, ISU. So the Administrative Services Agreement, when you are a self-funded program, you have a third party that assists with processing your claims. They also provide the network, so we have Florida Blue Blue Options PPO network for the employees of the district to utilize. That provides the largest provider network throughout Florida, the United States, and internationally. Florida Blue also processes all of the claims on behalf of the district. The district eventually pays for those claims, but they are the ones that are processing between the providers and the insurance. They also handle all of the prior authorizations for procedures and any medications and... Perfect. So they also do the administrative processes, so they are providing ID cards for our employees, benefit booklets, and they do service-related assistance. So when an employee maybe has a dispute about how something is covered, maybe a claim is not covered correctly, Florida Blue would be handling all of those services on our behalf. And then, of course, near and dear to my heart, they help facilitate many of the wellness programs that we provide to our employees, the diabetes management program, we have a weight management program that they help coordinate through Weight Watchers and several online initiatives, and then many of the other programs that we offer our employees for the wellness. As far as the Stop Loss, so when we present earlier this summer, we provided some claims information, we also provided a projection on what we felt the Stop Loss Policy would come in at. As a reminder, the Stop Loss Policy covers any amount of claims for each employee that exceeds a certain deductible. So we did negotiate that year, or that this year, we do receive that information in September and October with the ability to negotiate. We did stay with ISU. Initially, we were projecting the Stop Loss renewal to come in at an increase of about 16%. We were able to negotiate that down to 6%. The Stop Loss Policy, again, covers any claims above a specific deductible for each employee. We did increase that to $400,000 this year. It was previously $375,000. When we looked at historical claims data, the number of employees that exceeded that threshold, it made more sense to take on some additional liability and save on the per employee per month cost that is associated with the Stop Loss Policy. So the Administrative Services Agreement cost has actually not increased per employee per month in the last several years. We are currently under contract with Florida Blue until the end of 2025. We will go to an RFP this year for Administrative Services. So the cost per employee per month has not increased, but we have seen increased enrollment, which does drive the cost a little bit. And then the Stop Loss Policy, again, also on a per-contract-per-month basis, so either a single contract for those employees who have employee-only coverage, or a family contract if they have the plus-dependent contract. Again, those costs did decrease because we increased, or increased the specific deductible, but because of increased enrollment, we are seeing additional costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Powers, I have a clarifying question. Did we get a motion in a second on this item? Because I did not record it.
No.
We didn't? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment of the Administrative Services Agreement of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Florida, Florida Blue?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Can I have a second? Dr. Campbell, thank you so much. All right, with that, is there any discussion from the Board?
I just have a brief comment. Thank you for that, and I am grateful that we'll be able to go out and shop in a year or so. I personally feel like there are better options out there, and so I will look forward to the Board hearing about other options. I understand that Florida Blue has always kind of been this big name in the game, and a lot of providers take the insurance, but we are seeing changes in the market and in what providers are willing to take. And so, I personally, with young children, have experienced some shifts in what providers are accepting, and have gone to essentially cash pay myself and just kind of submitting for reimbursement. And so, I look forward to a comprehensive look at what the options are, and even potentially expanding what options we have right now to a broader market, so that families can choose things that would be maybe more applicable to their way of life. Because I, it's not lost on me that my insurance needs with three small children are different than maybe someone who's retired or approaching retirement and their children are grown. And so, I would love to see an insurance that reflects a variety of options.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any other comments from the Board? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief. Say thank you, as always, for your great work and you're continuing to monitor the marketplace. I don't disagree with Board Member James, you know, it's always important to stay mindful and nimble, and, and it's always a pleasure to have you bring what you feel is the best possibility for us, so I look forward to those future conversations as well. Thank you for all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anything more?
Nothing more.
Okay, all right. With that, we'll have a vote. Board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Gallagher's Benefit Services Agreement for Goods and Services? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Dr. Campbell. Second by, was that Dr. James? Yes, thank you. Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, do you have any information you'd like to share on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, we've had, you've had a lot of conversation about the goods and services from Gallagher prior to this meeting, of course, and Ms. Taylor is back to provide some additional context and information. The cost for this item, for your consideration, is $575,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good evening again, Board of Education. Item D29.3, the Second Amendment for Gallagher Benefit Services, is actually a renewal of their 2020 contract agreement, and the 2525, 2025 renewal comes with RFP services, and incidentally, that's what you were talking about, we will be doing an RFP for healthcare services, so that's going to be part of the services for 2025. In addition to that, we'd be looking at RFP for pharmaceutical services. The cost for that additional services for Gallagher is $100,000. However, on the Board agenda, we have the $575,000. The $475,000 that's broken out here is their regular fee, which is paid through carriers, but we put the entire $475,000 on for the Board to approve, because that's the fee that, since it's commission-based, that the carriers use to pay their commission. So tonight, you will be approving the Second Amendment for Gallagher Benefit Services for $575,000.
Thank you. Board, any discussion on this item? Any comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes four... All right, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the kitchen HVAC upgrade at Bellevue Middle School? Project twenty four dash one one two, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Campbell, second.
Second.
Second by Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gallant, do you have information you'd like to share on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, Ms. Boombach is going to do a presentation, Board. Pretty straightforward, this is to replace the HVAC system that's over twenty five years old at Bellevue Middle School. Cost is approximately one point one million dollars, but Ms. Boombach is going to provide you some additional details, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Subintend, Dr. Gallant. I'm happy to have this GMP to you. The current HVAC system at Bellevue Middle School in the kitchen area is over twenty five years of age. And the system has performed well beyond its useful life and is struggling to sufficiently heat and cool the kitchen area. We are replacing the existing water-to-air units with new high-efficiency units. And we are adding new outside air units as it is required now by code. The project will start, the construction part of the project will start on May fifth. With a substantial completion of August eighth, August ninth, I'm sorry. We are coordinating, right now, our plan is to. Get into the kitchen area after the school is out. And we're not interrupting any operations of the kitchen. In the, in case of an emergency and the units are shutting down and we have to get in earlier and we have the units earlier. We will coordinate with food service that they might satellite the food in from a different location. So we already have that as a backup plan. We are also already working on the ODP process to secure the equipment early. And get it ordered because the long lead items on those units. That's why we can start construction before May fifth, that's the anticipated time that we will receive those units. Included in this GMP is also a three percent contingency for unforeseen situations. Since it's a renovation project, there, there might be something coming up during demolition or construction that we did not encounter for. That's all I have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Boombach. Okay, Board, is there any discussion? Yes, Dr. Campbell.
My only comment, and the team knows I've been sending emails just now, so I'm grateful for this, I know it is going to be a little bit. You know, longer timeline than what we had anticipate or what I had hoped for. But understandably, completely understand the other AC issues at Bellevue Middle Cafeteria, I know you're going to be addressing and working on. So this will alleviate the kitchen issues they've been having though, so I'm grateful to move forward with this.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the roof drain repair at Westport High School? Project twenty four dash one one one, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I didn't, who made the motion? Dr. Campbell, okay, thank you. And second, Board Member Thrower, thank you. All right, Dr. Gallant, do you have any information you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as you can tell, Ms. Boombach is standing podium, she hasn't left, but I'll let her speak. But certainly, there's a lot of complexities here with the, with the, with the roof at Westport High School. Cost is approximately four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, but she's going to provide some context as to. How we've been trying to mitigate that and what we're asking for, thank you.
Yes, so we, we have been working on this for a long time, and I know the school has been waiting for, for the fix for their problems. But Westport High School had extensive water intrusions from the roof during heavy rain events. We performed a study to locate the areas where the water is entering the building. And we needed to establish a mitigation, mitigation plan to correct the issue. This is phase one of the mitigation work. It was determined that the current roof drains throughout Westport High School are detached from the interior side of the roofing system. And are causing leaks. So this work includes the disassembling of each of the drains. We replaced the rubber gasket that seals the pipe to the drain, and then we re-insulate the pipe. We did split it up into GMPs because it's very urgent that we get started right away. So we had this section of the work priced fairly quick, and we didn't want to hold up the other part. Phase two of the mitigation work is on the next board agenda in January, you will see that. And that includes brickwork on the high walls of the auditorium and the gym area. That took a little longer, it was very complicated, we did a lot of field surveying and investigation. We had to take out brick to really look behind the wall. And we think have a very good plan going forward. The start of construction for this part of the construction is January twentieth, and we're looking at a substantial completion on April eighteenth. All of the work will be done after hours because we have to get inside the buildings underneath each roof drain. And we, we cannot interrupt school schedule. If there's any times that there is no school in session and we can get in during regular work hours, we will get the credit back. That could be on no school days, holidays, or spring break. There is also included a two percent contingency for unforeseen situations. We also included an allowance for ceiling tile repair, since we do have to remove a few of those to get to the drains. We will also have protection of the wood floor in the gym, so we don't. One of the gyms has a brand-new floor, we don't want to damage that. That's all I have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boombach, Board, any comments or questions? Okay. I just have a brief comment, I happened to be out there two different times when we had a team, a district team was there trying to identify. Where these leaks were, and it really, it was just, it was very complicated. It's not funny, but you know, it is a little bit when you're tracing down, trying to find out where the water is going. So I'm excited to see us moving forward in that, on this, I know Ms. Cruz will be excited that this will now get fixed. So thank you for your, your work and perseverance in finding, finding these leaks. If there's no further discussion from the board, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsions of student JD twenty five dash zero eight five E. JD twenty five dash zero eight nine. JD twenty five dash zero nine seven. JD twenty five dash one zero eight. Without services for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 school year. And the first and second quarters of the 2025, 2026 school year, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Second by Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
I don't have any discussion on this.
It's under discussion. There's one that's under discussion.
That's correct, discussion.
We can have discussion on this item? Okay, I apologize, Dr. James, go ahead.
The, if there's going to be discussion related to any particular individual student case. Then that would need to be done during the off-air portion. But discussion broadly is acceptable.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, so I asked for all expulsions without services to be moved to the discussion portion of our agendas going forward. Because I have felt unsettled by the way in which we are doing without services. As a board member, it is unclear to me as to what gets a student without services and what gets them with services. As I looked at the particular packets for these expulsion without services. All of them are being expelled without services from their base school. And so while some of the, while some of the occurrences are extreme. And the conversations have surrounded big three, the big three things in the code of conduct. I have always said that I can get on board with an expulsion without services for the behaviors that are. Extremely violent or extremely dangerous to the students and invite learning environment of the other students. But what I struggle with is when those expulsions without services seem to be jumping a progressive discipline step. And so, jumping from a student enrolled in a base school to without services, without an opportunity for with services at an alternative setting. Is, is not okay with me, and the progression has not been outlined. And so I am, I am going to not be voting on expulsion without services going forward. And so that is why this was in discussion, and there is a one in pulled agenda items after this, because I want to have a separate discussion about that.
Okay, Board, any further discussion? Dr. Campbell, maybe?
I, I tend to agree with Dr. James on this, however, in this particular case, I believe I understand. That the offenses do warrant a pretty severe consequence. And that's why I'll be voting in favor.
Okay, Board Member Thrower, anything to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, I tend to agree, the actions of the students are severe, and so I am in favor also. At this time, we'll call the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Dr. James is not voting. Okay, thank you, Board. All right, moving on to discussion, pulled agenda items, D thirty point one. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of JD twenty five dash one 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 E. Without services for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 school year. And the first and second quarters of the 2025, 2026 school year, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Second by Board Member Thrower. Dr. James, you have pulled this item for further discussion.
Same advisement as before.
Can you expand your clarification as to specifics? Before I enter into my discussion?
If the discussion includes anything which could be identifiable to a particular student or a witness in the case. Or any particularized individual, then that would be, or could be easily identified from. The context, then that would be prohibited.
But talking about the grade of the student, the action, and or consequence.
I wouldn't want to identify anything related to this, even the school location, anything like that. Anything that could further give any personally identifiable information regarding a student. However, however, if it's related to, what were the other things you, you mentioned? The grades, things like that, that, those are, those are broad, so that's fine. If, I would not want for you to do anything which could narrow down or identify a particular student, that's all.
The type of offense.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Feel free to interrupt me if I get off the beaten path. This offense is a middle school student, and this offense is a drug offense. This student was at a base school and is now being offered the consequence of without services. I do not think it is appropriate. And again, we don't have prior discipline history, we don't have access to Skyward. I, I don't have any of that information, so I wouldn't be able to expand upon. And I'll go on record to say, I pulled this item on Tuesday when it was published, I believe, Ms. Martinez could correct me if I'm wrong. But I, I, with the information that's in the packet presented to the board. I feel it is not appropriate to expel this student without services. And I would make the alternate recommendation for expulsion with services for the same length of time. And so I know there's a motion on the table, so I don't, Attorney Powers can guide us, but that would be my recommendation to the board. Is that this, this is an amended motion for with services instead of without.
That was good, you can amend it as such if you choose.
Chair, if I can ask a follow-up question of Dr. James, and so the, the reason for. The amended recommendation is based on the age of the student?
The age of the student going on prior conversation this board has had in other discipline, which were off-air. Because they were, he cannot live into why, but we had prior discussion, which is why I pulled this separately from the rest of the packet. It's a middle school student, and it is a drug sale. And again, I can't see the student's prior discipline history, so I don't, I don't know. But what I do know is that I'm not comfortable with jumping from here to. Expulsion without services, from base to expulsion without services. And so, I mean, if someone from staff wants to shed light, certainly if that's within the parameters, I don't know, but. That's why I wanted to have a board discussion about it.
Okay, Dr. Campbell or Board Member Thrower, do you have anything else to add?
So I, I can, I can add that I, again, tend to agree, and that has been my very bold stance that. I would say very calculated stance rather than bold, my calculated stance that middle school students. Potentially do not need to be expelled without services. However, in conversation with the team specifically about additional information on this. Because I called and questioned and asked some of the very same things that you probably are questioned, that we all are questioning in this packet. The level, and I'm going to use the word calculation again. Of the student in this case. Is in such a manner that I can understand why this recommendation was being brought forth for us. And so, it, it is a tough one, because I don't know that we can blanket across the board, say, middle school students always get services. This, this one is, is unique, however, in light of it being a drug offense, which is also a stance that, that. I and other board members have taken, it is different than some other much more severe and egregious offenses. I, I can go either way on this one, I completely understand why it has been recommended without services. But if the majority of the board wants to move forward with services on this particular student, I, I can get behind that as well.
And if I might offer, Chair, there, there were other middle school students in our packet that were threats, and I did not pull them separately. Now, I'm, I'm going to maintain my stance that I'm not voting on without services until it becomes crystal clear to me as a board member. But I didn't pull them to be separate, because I, I can, I can get behind and understand. That a threat on our campus is something that should never be tolerated, and that makes sense to me as a board member. But a drug offense, it just, I struggle with that, especially from a middle school student. And, and things that have occurred just this week on our campuses in Marion County Public Schools, how is that going to come before the board? And so those will be future conversations that this board has, but I feel very uncomfortable with this action. And so I can certainly offer an amended motion, I guess, is that what my next step would be as a board member?
You can offer to amend, yes.
Okay, so let me.
Let's, can we hear?
Oh, sorry, sure.
Thank you. These are, well, first I'll say I'm looking at page thirty of thirty one, and I do see.
I am too.
Some discipline history. I also look at other things that led me to believe that. You know, this was a situation where the student knew exactly what they were doing. I'm not so sure that the receiving students knew exactly what they're receiving, because in this day and age, no one does. There's something called the fentanyl factor. And it's difficult to sit up here as a board member. And try to figure out some sort of matrix or model. That fits every single student and every single situation. Every single student in every single situation is individual. And that's why I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Powers is a quasi-judicial body. We're literally like judges.
Yes.
And we have to weigh. And we have to weigh each individual situation. So, if it could be crystal clear, I guess it would be crystal meth. But I take drug offenses, sale, very seriously for that reason. Dead kids is something I'm going to do everything I can to avoid. I'd like to see this student have to, if I can even say this, please cut me off if I can't have to complete a comprehensive drug program, if that's possible. I mean, it's a drug offense. Why wouldn't you have that? But if they're being expelled without services, then I don't know that we can make any of those types of things. And in light of, in lieu of not being able to do that, then I would definitely hope that whoever's raising this child would take it upon themselves, considering the discipline history, to help get their child on a better track.
Yes. Just to clarify, what I meant when I said, I didn't mean offense. What I meant was the consequences. So, is there a past, in an off-air, when someone comes before the Board, the cover page shares, they've had, you know, previous alt placement or previous...
Resurrection.
Yes. And so, when I look at this particular student's discipline, I see six level ones or twos, which says to me as a Board member and a former administrator that that child has never been alt-placed, expelled with or without services. Now, that's an assumption, and I don't know that to be true or not, but based on the level of the offenses, that would be the informed assumption I would make. So, and also, no prior drug offenses. And so, it's a significant jump, in my opinion, to jump from Bay school to expulsion without services. And so, that's why I would offer an amended motion.
And the Board having made its discussion and intentions broadly clear, may I suggest that we table this until the end of the meeting and have an off-air portion in which to address specific details and pick up the vote from that point. That would allow a full and thorough ability for the Board to make that decision.
I feel, thank you.
That would be great. Thank you, Attorney Powers.
I feel like I'm speaking in code.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Right. And my intention is not to overly limit you, but of course, student privacy is an important factor that we all respect.
So, with that, do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
Motion to table to the off-air portion of tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second. We also need a vote?
Vote.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero to table item, where are we? D, thank you, D three zero, student number J D twenty-five dash one-one-one E. Okay, thank you.
And we'll pick up after Board comments?
Yes.
Right. Thanks.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Attorney Powers. All right. Moving on to Board Meeting Reports and Concerns. There's a special Board meeting scheduled for December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven thirty a.m. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four at nine a.m. There is a special School Board meeting scheduled for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at three p.m. And at this time, we'll begin Committee Reports and Concerns. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. A couple of things. Reminder that Marion County Public Schools will be closed for winter break from December twenty-third through January fifth. I know we have a work session this week, but always a good reminder. And remember that the offices reopen on the sixth, and students now return on January seventh as a weather makeup day. So, January seventh, students are back. As a reminder, we'll remind everyone again on Thursday. I also want to just say on a lighter note, we're all dressed this way because I got the invitation to please wear an ugly sweater. So, I am proudly wearing my very, very old and vintage Twelve Days of Christmas in light of the holiday season. On a more serious note, Board, I want to make this comment. I just need to say this publicly in light of your recent conversation tonight. I can tell you that as a superintendent of the school district and in loco parentis, which is my legal responsibility, I will do everything, everything in my power to ensure that we are ensuring the safest campuses possible. And I'm going to underscore this to say, every campus, whether it's alternative learning or a traditional school, that is my responsibility. Board, you have the right and responsibility to make decisions, and I support your decisions as you make them, as you deem appropriate. You are elected to do so. But I will not bring anything forward that does not fit in with every campus being safe for every single child. The sale of any drugs, whether it's the first offense or not, is completely unacceptable. I will not speak to any parent and tell them that we accepted it because it was their first time. Selling drugs will not be acceptable by me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a note so that you Board members are aware. As you know, most of your conferences are held at Grand Height in Tampa for most of your conferences. Since I can remember, we've always had issues with check-in and checkout processes. I will email you all a copy of the charges that were submitted from the Hyatt Hotel and the Airport Hotel that totaled ten thousand dollars, which, as you can tell, that was an unforeseen amount, double the amount that was originally. So, I just want you to know that I do my very best to try to make sure that your check-in and checkout processes run smoothly. So, with that said, I'm sure this won't be the last time, but I will continue to do my best to get that rectified as quickly as possible so that when you guys check in, your card does not ding, not authorized. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
And I can add to that. I did note that during my checkout process, when I, they had already provided initial documents at the very beginning, including the folder, thank you, that you prepared, Ms. Martinez. And it was only at checkout that I asked again, I said, they're going to yell at me when I get back, so I would need to make sure that everything on here has been credited with our appropriate sales tax exemption and everything as it needs to be. And she said, well, let me double-check. And I hadn't gotten, at that time, the previously approved conference rate, and it was originally charged with sales tax. So, that was responsible for a large increase, which was then thankfully taken off the bill. It was just somebody at check-in didn't do it the right way. So...
To be honest, even though you check in and even though you have those forms that say no sales tax, they're going to charge the card the sales tax. When I include a price, two accounts payable, to give them a quote, I include the tax automatically. I don't just say twelve hundred dollars because I know it's going to be taken off. I include the tax because this always happens. They always still add the tax regardless of the forms that you submit to them. So, why do they make us submit the forms when they do it anyway is beyond me, but we do it anyway because that is what is required. But I can tell you, that was not the cause of that at all, Attorney Powers.
Okay.
Well, and to clarify to your point real quick, because I don't want the community to think, you always correct it. It's not, the sales tax doesn't stay on there.
Right.
No, that is correct.
So, I want to make sure that's clear to the community. They typically, even though we ask them not to, they do charge sales tax, and then Ms. Martinez has to spend time after we leave, or sometimes we're standing at the checkout counter, tiffing and taffing with the checkout person while there's nine hundred other people trying to figure out how to fix it before we check out.
Exactly. And I made a call on Friday because it was an item with sales tax. They told me on Friday I would receive an email where I would need to resubmit the sales exempt form. Today is Tuesday. They said it would be sent to me in twenty-four hours. I still haven't received it. So, that means there will be something sitting out there. Finance is already, you know, sending emails, making sure your P cards are reconciled within fourteen days, while I can't reconcile it when I'm still sitting out there with something with sales tax. So, I just want it out there. I do the very best that I can. The sales tax and all that is beyond my control once I have submitted and I've given you all your forms and your packets and therefore. So, it is a very frustrating process, I just want you to know, but I will continue to do the best I can to get you in and out as smoothly as possible, but just bear with it because that is FSBA and that's the Hyatt.
Ms. Martinez, I just want to add a thank you because when I checked in, you had all of the paperwork prepared and ready for me to present, you know, my tax exempt form. Everything is ready to go. So, I was surprised when you forwarded us the email you received with all of those extra charges because when I'm checking in and I'm checking out, the desk clerk is presenting a different picture to us. So, I just thank you for your diligence and staying on top of that, and I'm sorry that it creates a lot of extra work for you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Attorney Powers?
The only thing I would like to get is some clarification from the Board on the item twenty-nine point six tonight as to Mr. McGraw and the Realtors. So, I can request something of Mr. McGraw to come back to the Board with, or I can request a work session in which we discuss it, or I need to know what directive the Board would like me to do moving forward because as we've seen, you know, I'd often go back and kind of review everything that the Board's directives were and try to make it as clear as possible as to when the Board wants to split one thing off from another, or when the Board wants us to go in a particular direction to set something up as an item. Now, this time, of course, we were trying our best to get everything in before, you know, Thanksgiving Conference, all that stuff, so it was a compressed timeframe. But as to where we go from here, as of right now, unless the Board gives me direction and a directive, nothing more happens because I'm the person that would need to bring it forward. So, if the Board would like me to do something to bring it forward, whether that is to request that Mr. McGraw do, Attorney McGraw do an RFP, or whether the have multiple quotes or how the Board would like for me to proceed moving forward, I can do that. But I will need, because the problem is when we leave the meeting, as you all know, because almost everyone here has been a Board Chair, when I leave the meeting, I can't just ask individually, how do you want me to do it, because that would be polling you. So, I can ask the Board Chair, but in this case, the Board Chair is going to have to do the exact same thing that I would do, which is go back and review the notes of the meeting to find out what it is that we want done. So, I have to use my judgment, and I'd rather use your judgment than mine. So, if there is a specific ask or request that you'd like for me to have done, I can give you a recommendation that it sounds like what the Board was looking for is to get additional people, and I don't think it's a problem for Attorney McGraw. Attorney McGraw was given the instruction to move forward with selecting one. But Attorney McGraw works with a number of Realtors. He can select a few for us. If that's the direction of the Board, that's fine. And of course, I'll, you know, within the most clear limits I can get of what it is the Board wants me to do, then I can take that and use my best judgment to bring back to the Board something that is workable for you to then make some decisions on. I will note, that will need to have the decision, if there's three that we're selecting from or something like that, then that would have to happen during a work session because we get to pick one and then pull the contract together with that. Because otherwise, we'd have to prepare three separate contracts, you'd have to vote on one of them, and that's a lot of work. So, I would have to pull together that RFP information, or if it's not a formal RFP, at least multiple quotes, and have them, have Attorney McGraw give me the information that he has, and then bring it to the Board for a work session the Board can discuss, unless anyone on the Board has a particular direction that they wish to send me.
Well, one question that I have is, the groups that were presented, the group that was presented today, the compensation package, which was less than what most brokers ask for, you know, in the sale of a property. And so, one concern I would have is, are there other Realtors out there that are willing to offer that same level of percentage? I believe one percent for if it's one of the two that presented it offer already, or two percent if someone new comes to the table. And that's a pretty low number in the area of real estate, my understanding. So, my first question is, is he going to search out someone that can meet those same credentials, so to speak?
I can give him that directive.
Okay. And then, I think really, we need to hear from the two Board...
I'm sure that of two or three, one of them might be, I mean, that's typical with most quotes, somebody's going to be a little higher, somebody's going to be a little lower, and there may be other factors within their contract that we like or dislike more. So...
Right, but that's a lot of money. You know, every percent that we add is more money we're giving away. And so, you know, if it sells at the recommended price, that's forty thousand dollars. And so, I'm not an expert in any means, but in my experience, most Realtors are going to ask for a higher percentage, which is more money we're going to give away. So, really, I'd like to hear from our two Board members who did not vote for this, and what, I'd like to know what they're looking for.
And I'm just looking for directions, so tell me what to do.
Go ahead.
So, very similar to what I stated in my request for us to postpone this until January, I would like to see more than one recommendation on a broker. And I believe there are other brokers that will come in at the same request, requested amount. And I believe it's somewhat standard for commercial sales. I know we're a little bit more familiar with residential sales and six percent being consistent with residential, but the amount here is a little more consistent with commercial sales. And so, I would be interested to see if there are other commercial brokers that would be interested in being considered for this project, being that even if we were to approve tonight, we're heading into the holiday season, it's a really odd time to sell a piece of property anyway. I see first of the year being the most appropriate time for us to have a jumping off point for us to figure this out, and that's what I would like to see. And it very well may be the case that this is the one we choose, but let us choose it rather than being handed it.
Dr. Campbell, do you...
By default, I would tend to aim for getting three quotes. Sometimes, within the framework of what are comparable, we may only have two, I don't know. So, I'll certainly ask for three being the target.
That's what I would request.
But I want to make sure if there's any other detail that anybody wants to provide, I know it now so that I can make sure that I'm operating in the Board's interest as smoothly as possible.
Board Thrower, do you have any more comments?
Similar. I'm a big fan of choice, and I know that it would have been much cleaner if one of the sealed bids had come, you know, come in. It would have just made the whole thing much easier, but that didn't happen. Just feels pretty strongly that in the interest of serving the public, that we really should be provided with more than one choice, and it should be clean, you know? This company, this person, this company, this person. I know in commercial real estate, they'll do some sharing and so on, but again, we are a public entity, we're not a private entity, and anything that creates more transparency is always all right with me.
All right. Thank you.
Chair?
Attorney Powers, I'm sorry. Dr. James, go ahead.
Thank you. So, as I reflect back on the meeting we had, the Board came to consensus that Mr. McGraw had the authority to make a decision. We talked about options, and the Board said, in the sake of time, let's let Mr. McGraw just make a unanimous decision. Tonight, Board Member Campbell made an insinuation that I have a personal relationship with the listing agent. Well, the attached listing agreement doesn't state a listing agent, so I don't even know who the, I didn't even know who the listing agents were until I texted Mr. McGraw to ask him. And when he told me the names of the listing agents, I couldn't have pointed them out in a crowd of five people. I've never met them before in my entire life. So, the insinuation that I have a personal relationship with the listing agent is beyond egregious, in my opinion, because it is disrespectful to not only the marriage I have in my home, but also my responsibility as a Board member. So, that is first and foremost. I have been public that Mr. McGraw and I have worked privately on other ventures, and Mr. Attorney Powers and I had multiple conversations about whether or not I should even participate in these discussions with Mr. McGraw, and he said, that should be no issue. So... So, I felt no issue extending that leverage to Mr. McGraw to make the informed decision as the expert we hired to lead this process. But if the board wants to go in a different direction and have multiple options, that was an option I think I presented to the board when we had the discussion last. So, that's perfectly fine with me. But I am never going to be okay with an insinuation that I have an inappropriate personal relationship with someone that's coming forth on a contract. And if that was, in fact, the issue, then that could have simply been talked about and asked for a recusal. But none of those things are true, and I'm not going to continue to allow those kinds of mistruths to be spoken about me. Beyond that, if the board wants to go in this direction, I would make the recommendation that during the board meeting that is off-air, the first board work session of January, we recess, like we have done before, that board meeting. We go into our work session, we have the work session, we talk about Mr. McGraw's options, and then we go back into the board meeting to have a vote, so that we can button this up and Mr. McGraw can get this property listed. So, I believe that's January 9th, but I can pull it back up. January 9th would be the date. That way, that there is proper time for advertisement, and we can do it all in one day, as we have done before.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, and I agree, it would have been great if Attorney McGraw had been able to bring a single forward and not have, there be any questions, we wouldn't even be sitting here having these conversations. I did notice that there wasn't a name of who was really going to be representing it. And a quick Google search, you know, told me everything I needed to know. And so, I guess I just wondered why that wasn't on there. So, again, you know, in the interest of transparency, making it clean, making sure that the public knows that we're doing all we can to keep it straightforward and can be followed easily, and it's all right there for the viewing, then I'm on board with Dr. James' recommendation about January. We're getting pretty good at doing recesses and going into meetings and coming back out of them. And let's get it right where everyone's comfortable.
I need some explanation of what is your meaning about going into a recess on a meeting?
We did it just the last meeting.
We, I'm sorry.
Or...
We won't be able to do that in the nature that has been discussed, because we will not have a contract to vote upon. So, there will need to be a work session where we discuss it. And we will make a consensus decision on who the individual will be, or the business will be. Then at a future board meeting, we'll have to get the contract buttoned up, and it can't be the same day.
I'm sorry, but the listing agreement is a standard agreement. We are literally plugging in the numbers. It is not too much, I mean, the listing agreement template is, it's going to be the same exact listing agreement, the terms are the same terms. The thing that's going to change are the names that are on the listing agreement.
What is going on?
And so, it's not beyond the scope of practice to ask Mr. McGraw to bring three listing agreements. He's the one who built the listing agreements, you just checked them to make sure that they were correct. Is that appropriate to say?
Yes.
Yes. So, it is not beyond the scope of expectation for Mr. McGraw to come to the work session with three listing agreements and three potential real estate brokers or agents. Because the reason the listing agreement doesn't have a listing agent on it is because their agreement is with the brokerage, not with the specific agent. So, that is why it is like that. That's why the agent is not there, which is why I had to text Mr. McGraw to even figure out who the agent was, because I wasn't even aware that Boyd Realty Group even had the project. So, Mr. McGraw can come to the meeting with the three listing agreements complete. Bada bing bada boom, we pick one, we vote on it, it's all good.
Attorney Powers, if you believe that Attorney McGraw can do exactly what has been outlined and that we can get it all done on one day, I lean on your expertise to say, "Yes, you think that can be done."
I believe Attorney McGraw is certainly extremely capable and competent. What I would say is that we can have a copy of the listing agreement. If anything needed to be edited on the fly, we can do that. Now, I will say that our standard practice is that we always get a signature from the alternative, the other party first, then we sign. But in this case, if the board wants to waive that, we can have the board sign and then board it over. I mean, there's no, there's no particular magic in that.
Okay, yes, Board Member Thrower.
It's just, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes.
The one thing that I certainly want to operate quickly, and that sounds like it may be functionally an extremely good idea, with the caveat that sometimes when we're trying to do things very rapidly, it sometimes leads to some confusion. So, I will, I will work closely with Mr. McGraw. Now, this is going to be something that's going into January. Are you looking to try to do this on January 9th?
Yes.
Okay. I would like the, and that's our January 9th work session, right? I'm going to work with Mr. McGraw. I want the board's discretion to be able to say that if, for some reason, in discussing this with Mr. McGraw, I don't know what his schedule is or anything else, I'm going to look for an alternative date, and I'll set a special work session date if the 9th isn't going to work, with the interest being to try to keep speed as a factor. But still maintaining doing it all on the same day. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One more thing.
And I interrupted Board Chair Thrower.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did, I forgot, Board Member Thrower.
Thank you for that, Attorney Powers. The way I see it is, you know, you're here to assist and support us. Make sure that, sure, you know, getting things done and off of our list and on to the next thing is always something that we like to do, but not at the possibility of missing anything. And as dotted, T's crossed, you having the opportunity to really feel comfortable in your review, you know, again, that's why you're our school board attorney. So, haste can make waste. And, again, in the interest of public transparency, another day or two, I'm willing to trade for making sure that what we're doing is really solid and straightforward.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. So, just to button up what my original comments were, they did not include the word "inappropriate", so go back and listen to the tape. I did not make any accusations of an inappropriate relationship whatsoever. In an abundance of caution and in sheer transparency, I received a marketing email yesterday from Boyd Group about downtown Ocala properties. I guarantee there are many in our community that also did. And so, for us as a board to then take an agreement this evening that is only by one potential vendor, again, an abundance of caution. They very well may be the ones we choose. But if we don't do our due diligence and at least give ourselves options, the community will never trust us again. And we've had significant issues with trust issues throughout the summer, and I'm looking to move past that. Thus why I was making the recommendation I was this evening, and I look forward to voting on a recommendation when we have three to choose from. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I have one comment. 100% of the time, Attorney Powers continues each time to represent us very conservatively. Sometimes, Attorney Powers, I love you, but sometimes so conservatively. And so, while I understand some of the feelings that other board members have, I feel completely 100% comfortable with what Attorney Powers brings forth, because if he brings it forward, I know that he feels solid about what's being presented. So, I just wanted to share that. I know you're working closely with Attorney McGraw. And so, I appreciate the work and the commitment that's gotten us this far. I hated that he showed up here today and had to leave. That's not a great partnership look on our end. And so, I look forward to moving forward.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Attorney Powers?
No, I'm just, I'm sure Attorney McGraw would tell you, we attorneys are used to it. We get kicked in and out of court by judges all the time, so.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you very much. All right. Long-awaited comment from our student board members. You all have waited so patiently this evening. So, Serge, do you have things you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Conrad. I just want to say, tonight's discussion is very nuanced. Lots of details to sift through, but definitely the students appreciated in the regard that we're looking through all the scenarios, all the options, to make sure that the students get the best education possible. So, on behalf of the students, thank you. And also, I missed all the excitement. But I just want to say congratulations to Chair Conrad. Also, Dr. Campbell for getting re-elected to the school board. Thank you for serving our students and our community. So, and also, over the past weekend, our JRTC unit participated in a couple of activities. So, as I mentioned in the last school board meeting, that JRTC, the purpose of it is to transform students into leaders of character. And in all the events we do, we strive to make sure that goal is achieved. So, there were two events on Saturday that we participated in. Orienting was one of them. If you all don't know, orienting is where you go into this confined space, typically like a forest or an environment with lots of flora and fauna. And you take a map, and then you have to run around and locate all the points. In that, there's also the team aspect of it, and a part of being a leader is being able to work well with others in a team. So, that's the reason we decided to attend this event, because it definitely fosters that collaborative and teamwork spirit. So, our team went to the University of Florida for the competition. And besides the actual competition, running around UF means that we'll be able to explore the campus very well.
Sorry.
So, it's definitely a great opportunity for the students to tour the campus as well. Our team overall got first place out of 15 schools, so that was very exciting. I also want to give a shout-out to two of our cadets, Noah Archer and Michael Light. They both got first and second place respectively in the individual category. So, that was impressive to see. Also, our drill team, in a completely different event, it was ran by the Cut Different Nonprofit Organization whose purpose is to provide mentorship to our youth and support the overall development. And the reason we wanted to contribute and help out with their event is because they are essential in fostering our future leaders in the community. So, our cadets showcased our drill routines to the public and displayed overall what it means for a team to work together. Because in drill, a very important aspect of it is working together to ensure that not just the individual, but also the overall team improves in improving that skill. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations again. Very exciting. All right. Yes, Mr. Martin. You have some board comments you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple. So, I'm piggybacking off of what Sanchez said. I also want to give you two, congratulations for being re-elected. And some things I wanted to talk about today was, I'm under the impression that recently our student athletes in Marion County have, some of them have signed their national letter of intent recently. So, I wanted to just give a shout-out to them and congratulate our student athletes for furthering their academic and athletic career onto the collegiate level. Additionally, I also wanted to talk about the FCA breakfast that's coming up in January. It'll be January 28th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. I attended last year, and it was a great time to just hear the testimony of, testimonies of our students, just to see how wise they are spiritually and in every aspect, and just, you know, how good hands we, how good hands we're in in Marion County. And then, lastly, for me personally, I just wanted to show my gratitude for you guys even, well, first allowing me to be here, but also just considering the opportunity of having school chaplains. I think that's really good, and I think that's a, that's a big thing, especially for me, because I know that, like you said, mental health, we don't have enough people to help our students in Marion County with mental health. So, I believe that, I believe that that would help a lot. And I understand where you guys come from also, that, you know, there's little loopholes and stuff that might hold it back. But I definitely, I, I, I just appreciate you guys for considering it, because I know for me, I've had chaplains in my life who have helped me, even on like school campuses athletically and just with FCA-type events that have helped me grow tremendously. And I would not be in the position that I'm in today. So, I believe wholeheartedly that that could definitely benefit our students, especially because we talked about drugs a little bit today and students that go through stuff like that. And I believe that there's usually a deeper purpose behind why people do that, whether that's a lack of help at home or other things like that. So, I believe that, I just appreciate you guys for considering the chaplains, because I can, I believe wholeheartedly that that can help with those numbers and help those to go down and help those students to find a role model or somebody they can vent to, to be able to overcome these mental health issues and mental health problems. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful commentary. We sure do appreciate it. Dr. James?
Thank you. A couple things. This evening, Ms. Wiley spoke before the board, and I remember the board getting a request for changing or amending our expectations for public comment so that we could accommodate a transportation employee probably a month ago now or so. And so, understanding that we did not want to change our policies, because if we change them for an employee, we'll need to change them for all individuals. One of the things I walked away from conference learning, and it wasn't new knowledge, but I had, it's a lot of opportunity to have conversation with other board members in other districts. One of the board members I was speaking with shared with me that the board comment at the beginning of the meeting is comment on the agenda. And then, they reserve time after the business portion of the meeting for public comment on things not on the agenda. So, my recommendation to the board would be that we potentially move forward in that direction. And so, you still have public comment on the board items that are going to be on the agenda, so that we're properly informed prior to a vote on the agenda. But we are still offering an opportunity for public comment after the business portion of the meeting, prior to essentially comments that we're having right now, to hear testimony from community members, staff members alike. And that would open up an opportunity for our staff members who drive a bus in Zone 3 to be able to come before the board, but also afford that opportunity to all individuals in our community. And it may also hasten the productivity of the beginning of our meeting and getting to the business portion of our meeting as well. Because sometimes we have public comment, but it's not attached. I actually would say, oftentimes, we have public comment, but it is not attached to the business portion of our meeting. And so, we would be able to get through the business portion of our meeting and then hear that public comment not attached to agenda items afterwards. So, either we can talk about it right now as a board, or we can bring it up at another time. But that would be the recommendation I would like to make as a board member, to be able to afford that opportunity to all people with all work schedules. So, I don't know, Chair, if you want to have the discussion now or a later date, but I'd at least like everybody to chime in on their thoughts.
I just, real quick, will share mine. I really like that idea of, it's really a good compromise, I think. Because as we had our speakers this evening, earlier this evening, I was writing down numbers and thinking about all the people that we're trying to accommodate. All the citizens, all of the teachers, all the staff, and all of our students. And so, it's pretty much impossible to do that. But that would allow us some flexibility and a greater time span for people to get here with non-related items. So, I think it's a good compromise. Board Member Thrower?
Sure, and we've mulled this over in the past. There's pros and cons to everything, especially when someone comes before us. They're usually, sometimes they're complimentary and want to share positive things, but a lot of times, they're upset about something and make it sound like that that's the only way they can access the board, which I couldn't think of a less effective way to access the board, because we really try not to have private conversations with private citizens here back and forth at the dais. And this board, just for public knowledge, is one of the most transparent school boards that I am aware of after going to lots of school boards associations, meetings, and talking with all kinds of different board members from other counties and, you know, different ways that they do things. It's never a bad idea to try something new. I think I was the one that floated the idea of having early morning board meetings, so that someone could take a little bit of time off of work and come in and do their public comment. And we got like virtually no one, but at least we tried. And we also have our meetings live streamed on YouTube. And we also have our meetings livestreamed on YouTube. We could all be watching ourselves right now if we chose to. And we all know YouTube lives forever, so there's opportunity for people to go back and look, but for someone that does have something that they want to speak to a board member about, they have multiple, multiple opportunities and ways and methods to do that and actually have a conversation versus us politely sitting up here and then being politely but firmly told by our school board attorney, "Your time is expired." Okay, so you got to say what you had to say, but was anything, you know, really solved? We hope that it is, because then what happens? That person is directed to one of Dr. Gullett's staff, and then they go out in the lobby and have what? A private conversation. So in terms of how to make it productive, that remains to be seen. Am I against it? You know, I'm never against providing access to us, but I just don't want the public to think that, you know, that we don't respond. I would say that this has to have been one of the most responsive boards, and it was something that I tried to set as a standard. You know, you answer emails, you follow up on phone calls within 24 hours. Usually it's more like instantaneously, three or four or five of us have responded. And that's important, because we've been elected by the people, and that's a standard to maintain. So definitely not against it, worthy of further conversation. I think we did it when we did the morning board meetings, there's a trial for a certain number of time, saw how it went, and then reevaluated.
And if I might add, the thing I would request is, I know in our script we say by 5:45, but that's for the people speaking in the beginning. Similar to the county commission meetings, I would just ask that people who want to speak in the evening, just, they can watch on YouTube, and potentially they could be sitting in their car, or they could be having dinner, or they could be whatever, and they can just trial by error, show up, and as long as they are present and want to have public comment, they can submit a form, or someone could facilitate that if we want to collect that information. But I don't want to make a time certain for people to be here, because as we can see, we've lately been out of here before 8:00, and we probably will be here for another 30 minutes at least. And so I wouldn't want to set a time and then not be able to meet the standard that we've set. So I would love to just move to the comment in the evening being, if you're here and want to provide comment, similar to how county commission manages their public comment.
And I think that nearly all districts do it either way. They do limit the amount of time per person and the overall time. So it may be if you have, if for some reason you had, I've seen 30-minute or one-hour total allotted, and so that way if you have, you know, five minutes per person, well then that's a different number of people can speak than if you have 20 people who are here to speak, you know? And then it can be limited to maintain within that timeframe. So the board would just need to choose, if we were to do something like that, choose a total amount of time to set aside, whatever that amount of time would be. It's not a decision you've got to make today, but it's something that we can pretty flexibly incorporate.
Yes, Dr. Campbell?
So I agree with the thought process of trying to move general public comment to the end of the meeting, but similar to what Attorney Powers is saying, those boards that are doing things like that also are not, I don't know of another board in the state that has five minutes per speaker.
It's always three.
I don't know another board in the state. So I want to express that to everyone listening. Every other board I've ever spoken with, it's three minutes if you're lucky, oftentimes it's two, and depending on the number of speakers, it can be one minute per speaker. So we do have five minutes per speaker. Many of those districts also, when they do the public comment, either at the beginning or end of their meeting, that is not publicly on YouTube. While it's still a public meeting for those in the room, they are not airing that public comment. And so, similar to what Board Member Thrower has said, I am completely on board with at least considering it, but I was going to make a statement this evening about it being one of the least effective ways to communicate with us. Please, our email addresses and cell phone numbers are readily available to the public. Contact us directly, and you can really have dialogue and conversation. Certainly if you feel the need to come and stand before us publicly, that is your right to do so. But I often find the best conversations specifically with employees occur on a phone or in an email, as opposed to doing so in front of us when we can't respond, or we have chosen not to respond based on our board procedures. So I'm fine with us considering it, if that's what we want to do.
Okay.
A recommendation I would make is a 30-minute cap, and I'm totally fine with 3-minute max. So 3 minutes per speaker, 30 minutes total, I could completely get on board with. I don't know if we want to make a decision tonight, but we don't have another board meeting until January, and so it's hard, because this board doesn't get a lot of opportunity to have a ton of discussion. But we have a work session on Thursday, so maybe we could mull it over and talk about it. I don't know if Mr. Cummings will be there on Thursday, but that might be an opportunity for then us all to have a discussion about it on Thursday, maybe Chair, we could talk about it.
That's a great idea. Then we'll have a chance to mull it over a little bit, think if there's any other pros or cons we'd like to share and make a decision.
And then we could potentially implement it starting next, in the new year. Yeah, great. Well, thank you for that, Board. In your email, you received a few emails. One was from, I was going to say Ms. Hughes, but Ms. Heinz?
Harris.
Okay, I knew it was an H. With the administrative incentive schedule. And then there was also an email from Ms. Riedel this evening about the schools that were not reflected in that. So that was prompted from some questions that I asked as a board. I understand our work is about the money and the policy. And so, it was brought to my attention that that administrative leadership incentive plan was, that was used last year, was implemented again this year, and the first round of money had gone out. And as a board member, I had not received any communication about that leadership incentive plan at all. So I asked Ms. Marant, and then Ms. Marant got me connected with Ms. Harris? Hughes?
Harris.
Harris, okay, Ms. Harris, sorry. And we started having conversation. So last year, when the plan was implemented, it was my understanding that everyone got something. The baseline year, everyone got $500 at least, to recognize the efforts that everyone is doing. This year, that went away. And so that secondary email that you received from Ms. Riedel this evening outlines the schools in which have not yet received an incentive after round, option one and option two have gone out. And so essentially, option one is the targeted schools, and option two is enrollment. The targeted schools is about school grade in the past five years, being a D or an F, and then option incentive two is the enrollment. So incentive three is about school grade, so that's either improving a letter grade or two, or maintaining an A or a B. And my concern, and my first concern is that the board, this is a monetary piece that the board wasn't made aware of that was going out. But my second concern is that there are schools that are not eligible and cannot ever be eligible for any of them. And I didn't have an issue with it last year, because everyone got something last year. But this year, Fordham Early Learning, MTI, and MTC can never, and Hillcrest can never receive an incentive, because they did not receive one for incentive one or incentive two. And incentive three is about school grade, and Fordham doesn't get a school grade, and Hillcrest and MTI and MTC get a school improvement rating. I believe that's the phrase. And so that is not the same. And so, as a board member, had this been brought forward, I would have brought this up in discussion to be able to say, "I would like to craft a way that we are identifying pockets of schools that are not going to get anything," because it feels slightly demoralizing to the work that those leaders are doing at schools, when their work is not any less hard, but they are not being recognized in this plan. And so, I'm not exactly sure how to proceed, other than I wanted the rest of the board to be privy to the information that I had and what I am struggling with. There are also schools listed on this email from Ms. Riedel, and looking at historical school grade, we can make projections about what school grade will be for this school year, and those projections would land these schools with also not receiving an incentive for incentive three. And so, I am struggling with this, and I wish there was a way that we could navigate it, but going forward as a board member, when a financial incentive is going out, I thought that that was something that came before the board and we had discussion about. And I missed it if it happened, but I don't think I missed it. And so, I would just like an opportunity for the board to at least be looped in. And so, you all have all the information I have now, and so you can look that over and do with it as you wish, and if other people would like to move forward with something, we can certainly do that. And then finally, tonight, we discussed the chaplain policy. This is something that I brought forward, and I was passionate about bringing forward. And I'm proud of the work this board has done since I have been on the board with regard to bringing God into our schools. I'm proud of the "In God We Trust" posters that we have posted in all of our schools and all of our rooms. And I actually, when I go into a school and I see it, and not in a classroom, and I see it posted in another space, I typically take a picture with my work phone and text the donor who paid for them, because I know that it brings light into their heart to see that that mission is brought forth. I will say that as a board member, I don't, this is not something that I plan to continue to bring forward and antagonize this board with. I wanted to give it the full effort, and I want to acknowledge the work that some of our staff had to do to get to where we were is not lost on me, and I want to say thank you for giving your time and energy and effort to working not only with our community, but with each other, with legal, on navigating all of that. And I will hope that in the future, this will come before this board again, maybe in another light. But I know that our students still have so much opportunity on our secondary sites, more than elementary, to work with faith-based leaders like with FCA. I've had the blessing to start leading a coaches' huddle at Pappy's, which is at the four-way stop in Anthony. If you all haven't eaten at Pappy's, you should. But one Friday a month, I'm working with Mr. Allsepp leading a coaches' huddle for FCA at Pappy's, and we talk about leadership and the lens of a faith-based leader, and how they can inspire their students and athletes to be really great people of faith and leaders on their campuses. And so I will continue to lend my heart and my head to causes like that, and simply pray over an opportunity for this to come before the board in the future. So those are my only comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Board Member Thrower?
Thank you, Chair, and there's always so much to say, but I will keep it short. And I just wanted to share with our two student board members that, you know, I realize it's 8:15, and it's been a long day for everybody, you've been in school all day, and we've been doing what we do all day, but this is why we sit up here. This is why we agonize. This is why we, you know, weigh pros and cons and try to come up with plans and ways to execute them that will help each and every child. And each and every child is different and unique, and they're all deserving the same level of commitment, love, and support, to help them even learn what goals are. You know, first you have to know what a goal is before you can begin to start striving towards it. And so, it continues to be so personally gratifying for me after all of these years, you know, to still find such joy in serving kids and seeing kids. The days at schools are the best days. And, but then I'm reminded it's because, you know, we have the honor of sitting up here that we get the opportunity, you know, to do what we do. And these emails come at just the perfect time, and I got one last week, and I hope I can find it really quickly, and I had it up, and then it closed, because that's Murphy's Law. I'll find it real quick. And this is from a principal, and she shared, and this is a school where getting kids to come to school on a regular basis is not easy. And she said, "Taking a moment to share good news, Oak Crest students' attendance is in the green for a second day in a row, and green is good. Thursday and Friday, the number of students is low enough for us to be in the green, the number of students absent. It is a celebration when on a coldish Friday in December, only 29 students were not in school." So what that meant was that there were 29 students that still didn't get the benefit of being in school that day, but it's a tremendous improvement. So that was correlated to 95.34% attendance. And so, yeah, that's what keeps me going. I know we have a work session before we break for the holidays, but I just hope that each and every one of you continues to find things that make you want to get up in the morning and keep on swinging. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. And you were talking wonderfully, Board Member Thrower, about our student, board members, student representatives to the board. This will be their last meeting with us, because we do have a semester break coming, and so they'll be, this is their last meeting with us. But Sean Martin was really good to say, "Congratulations to all of our student athletes on their letters of intent." Mr. Martin, would you like to share with the public about your letter of intent?
Yes, ma'am. I've been blessed by the grace of God to have recently signed a national letter of intent to the United States Naval Academy, so all glory to God.
My dad is a proud graduate of the United States Naval Academy, just so you know. It's a lot to live up to.
So I would be remiss if I didn't give him that opportunity, and hopefully throughout the course of the end of the last quarter, I believe Dr. Brewer is also working with you both that you might be able to come back for one more board meeting, and hopefully we'll hear good things from Sanjay as well at a future date as to what your college plans are too. But I wanted to give you the opportunity, because I know I've seen it, and I've told you, congratulations, I'm proud of you, but our student athletes are doing amazing things and making waves in this community and now beyond. And especially whenever we have one that's not only willing to serve our country, but also being able to do that because he's a student athlete, I think that's imperative that we give that opportunity where credit is due. Okay, back to my original comments. So this evening during the consent agenda, we approved perfect audits, and I'm ahead of you, so I get to say them, for Anthony Elementary, Greenway Elementary, and Wyamina Park Elementary. Always grateful for the diligent work of our school secretaries and the bookkeepers who make sure that that happens. Wanted to share, since we talk, also committee reports last evening during the business, following the business portion of the City of Ocala Planning and Zoning Commission, we received a brief training on the responsibilities of that body that I serve as a non-voting member on. Continue to be grateful for that valuable position. I do encourage other board members to serve in their roles as other local bodies allow that to occur, because even just last evening, a question came from one of the other commission members who was about to vote to say, "This zoning change will have potentially the result of this number of students," or, you know, "What will be if we change this zone from commercial to residential, what will be the zone that that would be?" And so, it's just helpful to be there and be a part of those conversations, so we can talk through what that looks like. There potentially is a project coming across from where Marion Senior Services is right now. It will be affordable housing predominantly, senior adult, but not all. And so there potentially will be students there that currently would be zoned for Saddlewood Elementary School. So we'll just, we'll see as that progresses, but the zoning recommendation left planning and zoning last night. Wanted to say thank you to fellow board members who participated this weekend in the Christmas parades in Dunellen and Bellevue, while I was under the weather, so thank you for holding down the fort. This weekend is the Ocala Christmas Parade. This evening, I did email our student board representatives, as well as their principals, to ask if they wanted to participate with us on Saturday as well, because the board and Attorney Powers and Dr. Gullett will probably be on air, I guess. But those of us will be participating on the Christmas parade float, thanks again to Florida Express that they have provided that for us. But our student board representatives are certainly welcome to join us. I sent that email tonight, so hopefully I'll hear back to see if student rep and principal wants to join us on the float, and if so, I can give you more specific details. Today, I had an opportunity to speak to a group of middle school students and their school's leadership, and I shared with them about being trustworthy, transparent, and being a trailblazer, and that was really fun to share my personal experience and have all those students ask questions, because they were very inquisitive about lots of things, as middle school students can be. Wanted to tell the community, I know we're like three hours plus now, but the board does have an opportunity right now to each of us to choose community members for a couple of textbook adoptions. They are in the pre-K area. They are in the pre-K area, so I wanted to express that because if there are folks that might be interested in serving in those capacities, contact one of us. But the two areas that we are approving are for K3 English Language Arts Intervention Materials and for K4 Mathematics Intervention Materials. So if you are at the sound of my voice hearing that and you have an interest, I already expressed that you can find our email addresses and our phone numbers on the school board webpage, marionsschools.net, and then go to the school board tab and you can find us there. Let's see, and I already said about the emails as well. Last thing I wanted to mention probably would be a topic for a work session if it needs to be. But based on a couple of things that occurred even today with the adjustment of the agenda and just a lot of fluctuation of things that were happening today. Chair, I know that we continue to kind of move this position around a bit and I know right now the supervisory role for our board services clerk has been moved to our school board attorney. I'm going to make a recommendation, this is not because of anything other than just what I'm seeing and observing, that that supervisory role be moved back to the superintendent. Right now, especially when a predominant focus on Tuesdays and Thursdays has to do with agendas and what the agenda is and where things are placed and the scripting for how all that lays out is really a part of the superintendent's role because the agenda is the superintendent's until she recommends it to us. It seems it's really inefficient to have that not under her purview. So I believe that then if we for some reason believe that the board services clerk needs to be with legal, then now that we have a staff attorney, maybe it's she reports to the staff attorney as opposed to our school board attorney. It just seems really inefficient just kind of the way things are operating right now. That's my opinion certainly. I don't know if that's something we even need to weigh in on because she is not a board employee any longer. Our board services clerk is the superintendent's employee. We all operate at the, as district employees, but the way it is operating right now, I just see it as being quite inefficient. And that will conclude my comments this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Campbell. I do just want to share, gentlemen, we don't talk nearly this much at the Christmas parade. You can come and enjoy yourselves and we just wave and say Merry Christmas. So please don't let that be a deterrent. Please join us if you are available. We'd love to have you. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It has been a long evening. I thank everybody, especially our staff who sits and ready to answer any of our questions for being with us this evening. I have a few celebrations I want to share and just one single concern, but Ms. Beck is in the audience and so I was happy to see that you were here the whole time. So I started my day off at her winter program and it was just a great way to kick off this week. The celebration, I was able to participate, not participate, that is the wrong word, to observe, was her pre-K program. And so really what an amazing thing. The students are using instruments and keeping the beat and the rhythm and, you know, using their large motor skills. So anyway, just a fantastic morning and thank you so much for allowing me to come and celebrate the holiday season with you at your school. And what a great turnout she had. There was nowhere to park. What a great problem to have, such great parent support. So just want to give you a kudos. I know it's a crazy time of year, a million things going on, but the program was superb. So thank you to you and your team. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Jones here at MTI. Mayor Ben Marciano was here yesterday and shared his story with the students. I had not heard his story before. It was very impactful and I think it really hit home with a lot of the students, the challenges that the students, some of the students here have faced. And so I'm just really grateful that Mr. Jones is so community-minded and invites the community to be part of the narrative that's happening at MTI and really just, it boils down to providing hope. Sometimes we make a mistake, sometimes students make a mistake, and a lot of times we say this in our private meetings that are off air. And at the moment, it feels like the end of the world if you're 12 or 14 or 17. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be that way. And so the message that was shared yesterday was that story of hope and that you can overcome and learn and be stronger and better even when you make a mistake. And so I just really appreciate the effort, the open-mindedness and commitment of not only of our principals, but our community members. I can't remember if I shared this, so I'm just going to real quick. I was at Ocala Springs the other night for reading Under the Stars. It really also was a fabulous event. The kids came in their pajamas as an early childhood, lover of early childhood. It was almost like centers on steroids. So it was really great. The kids were finding vocabulary words and, you know, bingo scavenger hunt with their bingo words and it was just phenomenal. And so hats off to all the staff at Ocala Springs who stayed after a very long day of teaching school to make reading and learning to read enjoyable. So what a great event it was. And so you notice that every time we talk about account audits, Dr. Campbell swings over and taps me because she knows that I love sharing that information. So she usually, 99% of the time she beats me to it. And so I do love celebrating our secretaries and staff members that have those perfect audits because it is a challenge. But I do want to bring a concern forward. We did have three perfect audits, but we also had four that were not perfect. And so we continue as a board to see this pretty regularly and I think we have the opportunity to look at what we're doing in either hiring our secretaries or the training that we're providing to our secretaries to make some improvements in that areas because as we are responsible, you know, for the finances, I really would like to see a lot more perfect audits and fewer mistakes. And so as we move forward, I hope to see an improvement in that area. I do want to acknowledge that I know there was some conversation at the first briefing I attend, how much that job has changed over the years. And so I do want to acknowledge that I understand that just like the job of being administrator, a teacher, all of those positions have changed drastically and what's required of each of us every day. And so it may, Dr. Campbell, I did think of you as we look at job descriptions and, you know, just some things that we can help our staff in that area. And so with that being said, just want to thank everyone again for being here this evening and I will make a, have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Attorney Powers, should we not recess to go off air then?
We will need to recess instead of adjourning because we're recessing to go off air.
All right, we will recess.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Riedel.
And go off air. All right.
At 8:28.
At 8:28, yes. Thank you, Dr. James. All right, thank you.